Counselor Ciomo, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor Lenihan, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Murphy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Presley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Yancy, and Counselor Zakim.
Mr. President, we do have a...
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would ask at this time for all councilor's guests to please rise as I invite Counselor Baker to the podium. And also invocation, who will be done by the clerk, right?
Yes.
I'm reading my notes, but you will still do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sure.
Well, great. After the invocation's delivered, I would ask all members and guests to remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I welcome to the Diaz Clerk, Maureen Feeney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Spirit of life and love which moves through us and through the world, may we this day be grateful for the gift of life which is ours, remembering today and always that the life we have and hold is to us a mystery and precious. May this day we be reminded of the responsibilities we carry, not so that they may intimidate or overwhelm, but so that we may be true to them, so that we may be faithful in carrying them forward. May we this day maintain a sense of perspective, remembering who we are, engaging the tasks at hand, but understanding our limitations, understanding our own shortcomings, forgiving ourselves and others if we fall short of perfection. May we this day be inspired, be filled with new breath, be filled with new enthusiasm, be ready to see fresh opportunity and new perspectives, unnoticed avenues for action and resolution. May we this day remember those virtues that bless our lives and bless the lives of others, the virtues of caring and concern, the virtues of honesty and respect, the virtues of charity, industry, and patience. And may the members of this august body maintain a high sense of their calling. Remember that they are invested here with honor and call to a wider vision of the world, a world made more fair, more just, more equitable by their efforts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Baker will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, Counselor Baker, and thank you, Clerk Feeney, for your inspiring message.
All right.
At this time, I would like to ask Counselor Jackson to come to the podium where he will make a presentation of Chung Changing Lives Together. This is Patrick Chung, the Boston Patriots safety, and Cecilia Chung will join us also. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you very much, President Lenihan. I would also like to call up Counselor McCarthy because we have someone who is also guilty of knowing the Bello family, so want to call him up also. We are here today to honor the Chung Changing Lives Foundation, and they have an amazing summer program that is referred to as the Summer Music Academy for Real Teens. And this is an amazing program. It allows young people to build skills in songwriting, beat making, and more, and also production. And we actually have every single member of that program here today, and we would like them to come forward along with their teacher, Mr. Louis Bello. It is to be noted that Louis Bello is a world-renowned musician, but also is a Boston public school teacher. And I would love to have Mrs. Cecilia Chung come forward and let us know about the inspiration of this organization. I would just say, in a day and age when we hear about and read about athletes on a regular basis who may or may not be doing the right thing, we have in someone who was a member of the, actually, you said Boston Patriots, that's a long time ago.
No, it's the New England Patriots.
Okay, okay. The New England Patriots, who actually continues to support young people and really embodies that theory of paying it forward. So would definitely love to have Mrs. Cecilia Chung come forward.
Thank you.
Let's give it up for her, ladies and gentlemen.
Hi. So, just about two years ago, my husband and I, sorry he couldn't be here, he's in training camp currently, but two years ago, we formed Chung Changing Lives. Our mission is towards, to help children towards athletics, arts, music, and academics. We collaborated with Boston Chinatown Neighborhood Center. They have a music room, and they pretty much said, "We want to expand our music program." And we just thought it was the best fit to collaborate and co-partner with Boston Chinatown Neighborhood Center to begin SMART, which is Summer Music Academy for Real Teens. Mrs. Presley was there last year when we did a $25,000 check presentation to begin the camp. This year, we donated $10,000 to kick off the camp. And we have so many local businesses and companies that contribute to our foundation and believe in our mission and believe in what these kids can do. We started off with a pep rally in the beginning, just to kind of kick off the camp, and we have local youth around the Boston area under the age of 18 to perform, to kind of get the kids enthused and let them know not to have any stage fright. And then we have our final showcase, which is called the Chung Jam Session, which is at Harrock Cafe on August 17th, and the kids will just play all of the work that they've done for six weeks. Now, this camp is free, the kids are provided lunch, they go to camp Monday through Friday from 10 to 6:00. And basically, they learn everything there is to know about music, even if they don't have any musical instruction, they learn that. Vocally, they work on their vocals, they work on recording things in the music studio, and just developing a relationship through friendship and understanding the ideal work of teamwork. So, I'm happy to present them. There's 26 students. Last year, we had 15 kids, and for it to grow within a year is amazing to us. And just to see our vision come to life really means a lot to us, and how much music has impacted us, just in my family, but then seeing it happen for these kids, and it's just amazing to see it, so.
And we are going to get the real deal. Instead of just talking about it, we actually are going to get to experience this amazing musical program. So I'm going to step offstage for a second, and, actually, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm not dancing.
Okay, okay. I thought there was going to be a solo by Counselor McCarthy. I thought he was going to come forward, and then we will give the presentation.
If you ever find yourself stuck in the middle of the sea, I'll sail the world to find you. If you ever find yourself stuck in the dark and you can't see, I'll be the light to guide you. Find out what we're made of when we are called to help our friends in need. You can count on me like one, two, three, I'll be there. And I know when I need it, I can count on you like four, three, two, you'll be there. Because that's what friends are supposed to do. Yeah. If you're tossing and you're turning and you just can't fall asleep, I'll sing a song beside you. If you ever forget how it really means to me, every day I will remind you. Find out what we're made of when we are called to help our friends in need. You can count on me like one, two, three, I'll be there. And I know when I need it, I can count on you like four, three, two, you'll be there. Because that's what friends are supposed to do, oh yeah. Yeah. You'll always have my shoulder when you're down. I'll never let go, never say goodbye. You know you can count on me like one, two, three, I'll be there. And I know when I need it, I can count on you like four, three, two, you'll be there. Because that's what friends are supposed to do, oh yeah. You can count on me because I can count on you.
So, what I was doing on my, okay. So, I would like to present now a really good friend of the city of Boston, someone who constantly represents Boston. We know that there is a strong artistic scene in the city of Boston, and wherever he goes, including in the city of Boston, he actually is outstanding. I'd like to give it up for, actually, what the young people call him, Mr. Louis, but we all know him as Louis Bello. Come on up, Louis. And we are presenting him with an official City Council Resolution honoring his work in the music industry, but also honoring him for the great work that he does in the classroom on a day-to-day basis. And we definitely love to have you say a few words.
I wasn't prepared to speak today. No, I just want to thank everybody for having us. So, I'm honored to be part of Chung Changing Lives, and to be a Boston public music teacher, Boston public school music teacher, and just be part of this community. And I'm not going to say my age, but I've been in the community a long time, and I love Boston, and I'm just honored to be part of this whole process. And thank you, Tito, for having us up here, all the city councilors. And, thank you.
And we'd also like, we'd also like Mrs. Cecilia Chung to come back. Counselor Lenihan and I had a conversation, and we thought it would be appropriate that not only that we honor Chung Changing Lives, but that on this day, July 30th, that we refer to it in the city of Boston as International Chung Changing Lives Day in the city of Boston.
Thank you.
And that is official on the record. Honor all of these young people with City Council Resolutions. We will not do that right now due to time. We would ask that everyone come forward, and also that we give these amazing young people a round of applause.
Yeah, everybody?
All right. Great. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Louis. Thank you, Cecilia Chung. Thank you, Patrick Chung. Hope that he and the New England Patriots have a great season coming up. Yeah, they sing great. Well, that was a very nice presentation, a beautiful song, captured this time of the year and the meaningful work being done in Chinatown by the Chung Changing Lives Together Organization. I'd also like to recognize, Madam Clerk, that Counselor Zakim is in attendance, and could you please record that?
Yes, yes.
And also, I'd like to welcome back, after that long hiatus, one week, and we're all glad, Mark, you're doing well, please record Moxiomo also as present. Madam Clerk, you didn't think I heard what you said, did you? I cannot hear and talk at the same time. No, that's what I thought. Let me see. If there are no corrections to be made to the minutes of last week's meeting, the meeting minutes will stand approved. Seeing here are no objections, the minutes are so approved. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Counselor Presley's husband, Lynn Harris. How you doing, all right? That is great, ain't it? Communications from his honor of the mayor, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1225, Message and Order Authorizing the Department of Neighborhood Development to Apply for, Accept, and Expand Federal Fiscal Year 2014 Continuum of Care of $24 Million from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to Support Programs and Provide Services and Housing to the Homeless.
Docket 1225 will be assigned to the Committee on Housing.
Docket number 1226, Mr. President...
Will you read that through 1231 also, Madam Clerk?
I will. Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1226, Message and Order Authorizing the Commission on the Elderly to Apply for, Accept, and Expand Renewal Grant of $16 Million to the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs for the Continued Operation of Region 6 Area Agency on Aging and Direct Service Grant. Docket number 1227, Message and Order Authorizing the Commission on Affairs of the Elderly to Apply for, Accept, and Expand Renewal Grants of $4 Million for the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs for the Continued Operation of the State Elder Lunch Program. Docket number 1228, Message and Order Authorizing the Commission on Affairs of the Elderly to Apply for, Accept, and Expand Renewal of $2,700,000 from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs under the Council on Aging Formula Grant Program for the Continued Operation of the Commission's Health, Housing, and Other Units. Docket number 1229, Message and Order Authorizing the Commission on Affairs of the Elderly to Apply for, Accept, and Expand Renewal Grant of $2,700,000 for the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs for the Continued Operation of the Nutrition Services Initiatives Program. Docket number 1230, Message and Order Authorizing the Commission on Affairs of the Elderly to Apply for, Accept, and Expand Renewal Grant of $1 Million under the Domestic Volunteer Service Act of 1973 from the Federal Volunteer Agency for the Continued Operation of the Commission's Senior Companion Program in the City. Docket number 1231, Message and Order Authorizing the Commission on Affairs of the Elderly to Accept and Expand a Renewal Grant of $650,000 from the Federal Volunteer Agency for Continued Operation of the Commission's Retired Senior Volunteers Program in the City.
Docket 1226 through 1231 will be assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Docket number 1232, Message and Order Authorizing Police Commissioner to Accept and Expand a Grant of $119,000 from the Massachusetts Department of Mental Health under the Second FY-13 Jail Diversion Program Grant for the Purpose of Providing Assistance and Referrals to Individuals with Mental Illness and/or Emotional Disturbance.
Docket 1232 will be, docket 1232 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety.
I'll read the next.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, read 1233 through 1236, please.
Docket number 1233, Message and Order Approving the Receipt of the Preservation Restriction Agreement on the Herd House, 65 to 71 Main Street, Charlestown. Docket number 1234, Message and Order Approving the Receipt of the Preservation Restriction Agreement on the Spooner Lambert House, 64 Bartlett Street, Roxbury. Docket number 1235, Message and Order Approving the Receipt of a Preservation Restriction Agreement on the Cushing Endicott House at 163 165 Marlborough Street, Boston. And docket number 1236, Message and Order Approving the Receipt of a Preservation Restriction Agreement on the Cedar Street Marlborough House Buildings at 2830, 32, 34, 36, 38, 40, 46, and 46A, Cedar Street, Roxbury.
Docket 1233 through 1236 will be assigned to the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor.
Docket number 1237, Message and Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expand a Grant in the Amount of $590 from the FY-13 National Institute of Justice, Social Science Research, and Forensic Science, passed through the University of Illinois-Champaign for the purpose to support analysis, data collection, and reporting by BPD's Crime Lab and the Office of Research and Development.
Counselor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1237. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. The ayes have it, docket 1237 as passed.
Docket number 1238, Message and Order for the Confirmation of the Appointment of Theodore, I'm sorry, Dr. Theodore C. Landmark, as a member of the Boston Redevelopment Authority and Economic Development Industrial Corporation, known as EDIC, Board of Directors for a Term Expiring August 15, 2019.
Docket 1238 will be assigned to the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor. Reports of public offices and others, Madam Clerk.
And I'll read the 40.
Read docket 1239 through 1242.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 1239, Notices received from the Mayor of his absence from the city on Monday, July 21, 2014, at 7:00 a.m. on Monday, July 21, 2014, at 7:00 a.m. until 6:01 p.m. Docket number 1240, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Elaine Pulginie Broderick as Commissioner to the Board of Examiners. Docket number 1241, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Alexander H. McLeod as Commissioner to the Board of Examiners. And docket number 1242, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the First Amendment to the Report and Decision on the Bridgeview Apartments Chapter 121A Project.
Docket 1239 through 1242 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1243, the Constable Bonds of Scott P. Butler, Joseph Kelly, William Joyce, William Joyce Jr., Louis M. Ortiz, and Alexa McNeil have been duly approved by the Collector Treasurer and were received.
Docket 1243 will be approved under the usual terms and agreements. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1243 has been approved under the usual terms and conditions.
Docket number 1244, notices received from the mayor of his absence from the city on Thursday, July 24, 2014, until Friday, July 25, 2014. And docket number 1245, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Joseph E. Finn, Fire Commissioner of the Boston Fire Department, effective July 28, 2014.
Docket 1244 and 1245 will be placed on file. Reports of committee, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0818, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on May 7, 2014. Docket number 0818, ordinance amending the Boston Fire Prevention Code, Article 33, regulating the sale and use of outdoor cooking appliances, outdoor patio and space heating equipment, outdoor decorative heating appliances, and outdoor fireplaces within the City of Boston. submits a report recommending the order ought to pass in a new draft.
The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty, on docket 0818.
0818, pass in a new draft. After a hearing on June 3 and a working session on June 23, we met with representatives from the Boston Fire Department to work out language in this ordinance. This is a public safety issue that outlines the rules and regulations for grills and outdoor heating appliances. Based on the information that we had obtained at the hearing and the working session, the regulations are intended to protect and educate the public on the safety of outdoor grilling, and enforcement will be based upon complaint basis. The regulations would also establish standards for commercial-use space heaters, fireplaces, and decorative heating appliances in order to ensure public safety. Procedurally, the fire code can only be amended through city ordinance, and as a result of which, BFD explained that most of these regulations are actually already state law. However, the language has been disputed at multiple levels, so it's essential that we explain it thoroughly at the city level through a city ordinance. And with that, defer to the Chair of Public Safety this time, Counselor Murphy, in which case he'll renew passage in a new draft. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to my colleague from South Boston, Counselor Flaherty, for his willingness to engage quickly on this matter of public safety concern for the entire City of Boston. The ordinance updates the current Boston Fire Prevention Code, which was last updated, I believe, entirety, in its entirety in the 1940s, before propane was used as an outdoor cooking accoutrement. And so this, before charcoal, actually, was used for grilling. And we have a small city, a city that's built close. We had a fire going on, going on this morning over in East Boston, three deckers, and three of them caught hold. Now, I know there was no cooking involved in that, cooking utensil involved in that, but in particular, the Boston Fire Department has had its run-ins with numbers of these fires that start and get out of control because of the proximity of buildings between one another. So this ordinance updates the current Boston Fire Prevention Code. It provides clear-cut regulations on the sale, use, and storage of various outdoor heating and cooking appliances, including fire pits, charcoal grills, wood charcoal or fuel pellet fire stoves, outdoor fireplaces, and propane mushroom-style space heaters, which we can find proliferating sidewalks around outside of restaurants to keep people warm in the winter. We're working in concert with our colleagues at the state, which will have updated fire prevention codes in effect in January of 2015. The proposed regulations we discussed at the hearing and working session include requiring merchants to post clear signage, informing customers of the city's policy on fire pits, clarifying the authority of the fire marshal over commercial use of space heaters, fireplaces, et cetera, clarifying use of storage of liquid petroleum, commonly known as propane, gas containers used with portable grills, and increasing penalties for violations. It's especially important to clarify these regulations for the safety of residents in densely populated neighborhoods. The Fire Department noted several cases just this year of fires that have originated through negligent use or storage of charcoal grills, notably an apartment fire at 807 Center Street in Jamaica Plain. Our constituents deserve the peace of mind that comes from knowing their neighbors themselves won't be accidentally setting their building on fire with a charcoal or propane grill. The Boston Fire Department has agreed to start a public safety education piece once this ordinance is passed. I want to thank, again, Counselor Flaherty and the Government Operations Committee for their hard work on this matter, and I encourage passage at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Flaherty moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0818 in a new draft. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0818 has been passed in a new draft. Madam Clerk, matters recently heard for possible action. Yeah, please, could you read docket 0958 and 1101?
Docket number 0958, message and order authorizing the Environment Department to accept and expend a grant of $28,500 awarded by the National Park Services, passed through the Massachusetts Historical Commission for the FY20 Survey and Planning. And docket number 1101, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $50,000 from the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, known as DOER, grant, the Green Communities Grant Program for the fiscal year 2015, awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, to be administered by the City of Boston's Office of Environment, Energy, and Open Space.
The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Environment and Parks, Counselor O'Malley, on docket 0958 and 1101.
July 29, the Committee on Environment and Parks held a hearing regarding these two dockets. I want to thank my colleague and friend from District 5, Counsel McCarthy, for his participation in the hearing. Docket 0958, it's a $28,500 grant. It's awarded by the National Park Service to the Environmental Department through the Mass Historical Commission. This is a grant that will fund Phase 2 of a survey in the North End, evaluating the historic significance of area buildings. Phase 1 was concluded earlier this year, and this will be Phase 2 of what is likely to be a multi-phase survey. The results of this survey will be used to help shape the preservation of the North End neighborhood in the future. North End was chosen specifically for this survey because it was last surveyed by the Historic Preservation Commission in the late 1980s. And since the completion of the Greenway, the North End has been a magnet for development. The Historical Commission is hoping that these results of the survey will help them manage the upswing in development while maintaining the historic integrity of the neighborhood. Docket number 1101 is a $50,000 grant. It's awarded by the Mass Department of Energy Resources Green Communities Municipal Energy Manager Grant Program, it's a mouthful, to be administered by the City of Boston's Office of Energy, Environment, and Open Space. This grant will fund the partial salary of one of the city's two municipal energy managers. Joseph LaRusso, our current manager, testified the total salary cost for this position would be, he said, approximately $80,000. Fifty coming from the, this grant, the 30 remainder, the balance, coming from the City of Boston. This manager will work with Mr. LaRusso in overseeing the Enterprise Energy Management System, which collects the reports of all 320 city-owned municipal buildings and assets. Obviously, City Hall, Court Street, the New Ferdinand Building, every police station, firehouse, school, and every other city asset is included in this. The Enterprise Energy Management System is responsible for the city's compliance with the Energy Reporting and Disclosure Act, BERTO, that this body passed last year. The data collected will help determine how the city will reduce energy usage and greenhouse gas emissions. It is my recommendation that both of these orders ought to pass. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. We'll read them individually. Counselor O'Malley moves for acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0958. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0958 has been passed. And Counselor O'Malley moves acceptance of committee report and passage of docket 1101. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1101 has been passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0740 and 0741?
Docket 0740, message and order authorizing the Police Commissioner to accept and expend the FY15 State 911 Department PSAP and Regional Emergency Communication Center Support and Incentive Grant of $3,253, I'm sorry, $3,253,317 awarded by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security of 911 Department. Docket number 0741, message and order authorizing the Police Commissioner to accept and expend the FY15 State 9/11 Department Training Grant Funds of $773,486 awarded by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, State 911 Department.
The Chair recognizes the Committee on Public Safety. Counselor Murphy on docket 0740 and 0741.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before us, we have two dockets totaling a little over $4 million. We had a hearing, a public hearing yesterday of the Committee on Public Safety. We were joined by the Police Commissioner, William Evans, and Cheryl Joyce, excuse me, from their grant-writing department. These funds are all allocated from the State EOPS Department through to the Boston Police Department for upgrading our E911 Enhanced 9/11 Dispatch Computer-Aided Dispatch System. And the funds go to salary increases for 9/11 operators and telecommunications, hiring of more personnel to handle increased call volume, and the overtime and backfill for technical systems training as our own personnel get updated on these new systems. And what is at the root of this, Mr. President, we've known for a long time, is that people calling 911 on a cellphone, oftentimes, up until this new technology, they would automatically go to Framingham, to the state police barracks, if you were on a cellphone. And then the state police would have to relay that back to Schroeder Plaza. And over the last year or so, technical upgrades have been made so that those calls can come directly from a cellular telephone, if someone is in the City of Boston, to the Boston Call Center, saving valuable time on response. There are still a couple of areas in the city where all the bugs haven't been worked out, but this grant is one that is funded, and continuous funding, by, part of the formula is how many calls you get. So as we increase the number of calls we get, we'll be increasing external funding. So it more than pays for itself. And I recommend at this time that the City Council adopt the recommendation from the Public Safety Committee and pass this, pass these ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0740. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0740 has been passed. And Counselor Murphy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0741. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0741 has passed. Counselor Flaherty, for what purpose do you rise?
High five out of order. We have our finest that are here, and it'd be more appropriate that they're out doing what they do best as opposed to waiting for us to complete our agenda.
If there's hearing, no objections, then we will move that matter forward. Madam Clerk, would you please?
Docket number 1255, Counselor Flaherty offered the following order, approving a petition for a special law regarding the appointment of special police officers in the City of Boston.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty on docket 1255.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a home rule petition that would allow recently-retired Boston police officers to apply to become special police officers and work police details throughout the city. It comes in response to an overwhelming of detailed requests by the police department that have, over the years, been unmet, given the fact that we don't have enough police officers to fill these requests. For some background, officers who are working details, they're paid by private companies such as N-Star or Fenway Park, the Red Sox, TD Bank Garden, and they provide security, traffic details, and carry out necessary public safety functions. So it's a cost-neutral, in the sense that it's not going to cost us any funds, the city any funds, to implement this program. However, we're in turn going to receive 10% administrative fee on all paid details, and that could amount to somewhere in the vicinity of $3-plus million, money that quite frankly could maybe fund cadet program that you and our colleagues have been promoting here, or talk about other crime-fighting initiatives, or maybe helping out with our clearance rates. So a number of things that we could use those funds for with respect to public safety. With more officers available to perform the details, we'll have an opportunity to add additional revenue. It's a no-brainer, as far as I'm concerned. 175 cities and towns across Massachusetts already have passed, you know, rules and laws allowing recently-retired police officers to perform details. What I like best about it is that we're capturing that talent, we're capturing that training, and we have very capable and experienced bodies that are on the street in uniform, with radios, communicating, and able to perform a very vital and necessary public safety function. So from my perspective, I encourage my colleagues to sign on, look forward to an expedited hearing, and we'll also note that it enjoys the support of our Patrol Officers Union, our Superior Officers Union, and our detectives. So have the three-pronged approach in terms of their support and how they're going to implement it and work it out. And also, it will become at the sole discretion of our new Police Commissioner in terms of who he believes and deems fit to serve in this capacity. So look forward to the hearing and appreciate you allowing me to take it out of order so we can get our police back on the street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend Counselor Flaherty and the Chair, as the Chair of Government Operations, for moving quickly on this matter. As Counselor Flaherty said, more than half of the cities and towns in the Commonwealth already have this provision. Why can't we have experienced law enforcement professionals, at no cost to the taxpayers, out covering details that are going unfilled right now? It's a no-brainer, and as Chair of Public Safety, I want to commend Counselor Flaherty and support wholeheartedly this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Madam Clerk, could you please add my name to this order, please? Counselor, Counselor Lamatina, just add your name, please. Counselor Baker, add your name. Counselor Lamatina, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Murphy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Yancy. Docket 1255 is assigned to the Committee on Government Operations and the Committee on Public Safety. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Madam Clerk, if we could move on, that would be great.
Docket number 1246, Counselor Linehan offered the following order for hearing regarding transportation regulations in the City of Boston.
Chair recognizes Counselor Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thank you for the opportunity. 1246 is a hearing order on transportation matter related to the city of Boston. Uber was launched in Boston in 2011. This was the introduction of Transportation Networks Company operating the city. The Transportation Network is also known as a rideshare system, which uses online platforms to connect passengers and drivers. Many of you know it, many of our constituencies and citizens use it. For Boston, as in many other cities, our laws were not prepared to handle these types of rideshare companies, and ensure that they can coexist with licensing transit companies, which are already licensed, already regulated by the city, and operate under clear rules and regulations. We regulate transportation options for many reasons: for public safety, to ensure vehicles are properly insured, to ensure passengers are treated fairly, and that there's equitable access. Since the introduction of transportation network companies, most of our peer cities have begun the process of examining how to incorporate these new services into regulatory and licensed processes. Washington DC, Seattle, New York, and Chicago are some examples. We know that the mayor has formed a task force to look into this issue. This hearing order will enable us, the Boston City Council, to bring together interested stakeholders, to figure out the best way forward on all types of transportation, and begin the discussion for the council on this important matter in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to commend the council president, and ask to have my name added. I think this is a wise and timely decision by the city council to weigh in on this. As the president has said, technology is changing, and we have gone through a system whereby, in order to promote public safety and accountability, have all of our taxi medallions licensed through the police commissioner. And when we built the convention center originally, a few years ago, one of the ways the city was able to fund its portion, and I think we, part of its portion, we had come up with over $200 million, was through selling additional cab licenses. Now you have car services coming in without any medallion, without any background checks, without any safeguards whatsoever, and competing for the same passengers. And it's a technology-driven thing, with apps and iPhones and all this stuff that I don't frankly understand all that well myself, but I want to commend Counsel Linehan and have the city council be out front, and put every provider on the same page, and have everybody equal in the eyes of government. So what's good for one person that's in the business should be good for all people, and we shouldn't have different standards because a car is painted a different color. And that's, in the interest of fairness, I encourage us to move forward together on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I have been a customer of both Uber and Lyft. Every time I've used the services, the service has been exemplary, and I'm not alone. There's a reason why they are an enormously popular opportunity for many Bostonians, why they are so well-regarded by many of our constituents. In addition to that, I've met, I know many of you have met with different representatives of the two companies, and they've really illustrated some of their safety procedures, the customer service apparatus and other things, and it's been very encouraging to hear that. So while I certainly appreciate any opportunity to have a hearing and come together and have some questions answered, I do think that we need to be doing, really helping to encourage the real innovative economy, that we're seeing in apps and services like this, and would hope that, you know, we keep that in mind, that these do serve many of our constituents extraordinarily well. There are services that are popular, that are well-known and well-liked, and we should, I think, again, appreciate an opportunity to sit down and have questions answered, but I do hope that we don't drive these types of businesses out of the city of Boston and really stifle the innovation economy. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Lamatina.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I also want to echo the remarks of Counsel O'Malley. I use Uber, and a lot of my constituents in East Boston use Uber, because they have a hard time with taxis going to East Boston, particularly when you're coming home from vacation, you know what I mean? So there's an issue. So this service is good for the city of Boston. My daughter uses it. I feel safe when she uses it, because everything's on the computer. So you know, drivers come in, the cars come in, it's all documented on the app. I look forward to the hearing, but it's a very important service to the people that live in my district, and so I look forward, and I commend you for having this, and I think that, once you understand the operation, you'll see it's a good operation. I think competition is actually good for the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Yancey.
Vice President, I would like to commend Counsel President Linehan for offering this. It's long overdue that we take a look at transportation providers in the city of Boston. Because in addition to these two relatively new businesses in our city, we have livery services, we have, quite frankly, some folks who have gypsy cabs in the city of Boston. And even with our medallion owners and taxi cab drivers, there are some major issues with regards to regulations and governance, and it's not unusual to hear complaints from the taxi cab drivers themselves about being treated fairly and consistently and not being subjected to arbitrary and capricious decision-making on the part of the police department, the Hackney Division. So the Hackney Division was created in a different era. The Uber and the Lyft of the world are created in a brand-new era, and I think it's altogether appropriate that this body reviews the practices and policies of both, and to see if we can come up with a consistent plan that does not discourage entrepreneurship in the city of Boston, and taking advantage of the wonderful new technologies we have today. But as Counselor Murphy mentioned, we asked our taxi cab industry to subsidize the convention center. At that time, we were looking at a $1 billion convention center with the city, and Counsel Murphy can correct my numbers, with the city coming up with an initial $157 million investment, the bulk of which coming from the sale of new medallions. So we have to look at the issue of justice and fair play with regards to the taxi cab industry as well. So it's a somewhat complex and complicated situation, but review by this body is long overdue. We should even ask the question, who should regulate transportation services in the city of Boston? And are we long past the time where we rely on a very antiquated system that resulted in the creation of the Hackney Division within the police department, solely under the control of the police commissioner? Maybe the transportation commissioner should be involved in this issue as well. So I'm looking forward to the hearing, and again, I commend my good colleague from South Boston and the South End, President Linehan, I'd like to have my name added.
Thank you. Counsel Zachem.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I want to commend Council President Linehan on this hearing order. I agree, it is long overdue, and I look forward to examining how all the different modes of car-for-hire in the city of Boston work together to make sure that what we have is a fair system, but also a system that recognizes innovation and supports it. I think it's very clear by the overwhelming popularity and success of Uber and like services, and I myself am a regular user, it's part of my sort of multimodal transportation around the city, between the subway, the T, Uber, my own car. I took an Uber to my first meeting this morning, so I'm certainly an avid user. However, I think it's important that, like, with any new technology that's being used by probably tens of thousands of people in the city of Boston, that this body should examine it and make sure that we have proper safeguards in place, to make sure that when someone gets in, they know they're going to be safe, but also that they know that whatever consumer issues come up, make sure that they have a venue for addressing those, to make sure that the employees, or I believe they're technically independent contractors now who are driving these cars, are properly protected, because many of these drivers also are residents of the city of Boston. To make sure that, you know, we have a coherent message, a coherent transportation plan, I would, you know, echo my Counsel Yancey's comments about examining who should be regulating this in the city of Boston. So I look forward to participating in this hearing. I think it's especially timely, considering the mayor's taxi and transportation task force. It's important that both sides of this building weigh in on this issue that affects, really, I think, all Bostonians, so I'd like to have my name added. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Chair recognizes Counsel Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I rise today to sign on to this order for a hearing. I also would like to echo the statements of Counsel Yancey there. I don't think that we want to necessarily block good business, but we do need to have businesses that are coming in pay their fair share. If we regulate the taxes, I believe, there has to be at least a discussion around Uber and Lyft. Thank you. Sign my name, please.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Counsel Wu.
Thank you very much. I think the fact that so many of our colleagues have risen and spoken about this shows the importance of transportation options throughout all of our districts and throughout the city, and the many pieces that put that together. I just wanted to echo some of the remarks around the importance of providing options. I myself also use Uber, my family does as well, and we understand the convenience and technology very well, understand the challenges of the medallion system, and the many, many changes that are needed from the city side to make sure that we are treating drivers fairly, and that that industry should be allowed to thrive as well. So I want to commend the maker for writing this order very broadly, so that it will be a full discussion. I think many other cities have taken to pigeonholing the conversation one way or another, and I'm looking forward to a broad discussion, both on rideshare and technology and innovation, as well as changes that are needed to our existing or our longtime services, the taxi drivers that have been providing services for a long time in Boston. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like your name added, Counselor?
Yes, please.
And please add Counsel Pressley's name. Docket number 1246 will be assigned to, oh, I'm sorry, add your name. Chair recognizes Counsel Jackson.
Thank you so much. Mr. President, I rise to just add my voice to this conversation. I think, and again, I actually appreciate the fact that Counsel Linehan looked at this broadly. There is more than a conversation that we need to have about Uber or Lyft. There's a conversation that we have to have about taxi cabs. We have to talk about the 6% transaction fee that taxi cab drivers actually lose, which makes the experience really difficult in the cab, because oftentimes, people tell you that their machine doesn't work in order to get you to pay cash, because they are diminished every time you swipe that. The other aspect of it is that, the fact that there is a pot of dollars that is actually not being shared with the taxi cab drivers, which is when I watch Jimmy Fallon, which I like, I like the show, but when I watch Jimmy Fallon commercials in the back of the cab, every single time, there's actually ad revenue that is involved in that also. In addition, I think Counsel Yancey brings up a really important point. Who should actually regulate transportation in the city of Boston? I personally think, and we actually had Counsel Flaherty bring up police officers a little bit earlier, there's about 15 to 16 police officers who are in the Hackney unit. And again, I'm sure they're very, very qualified individuals. I would love to be able to liberate those individuals and have some other folks do that work, and have more of our Boston's finest actually on the streets. So I think there's a real important conversation that we holistically have to have in terms of where all of this lives. In addition, we are now trying to move, with the leadership of Mayor Walsh, into a 24-hour city. And as all of us know, the huge issue that happens at 2:00 in the morning, every single Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, around the issue of capacity, and you have droves, and we don't even have college students here right now, but we have 150,000 of them who are going to be coming back, we have droves of young people who are walking the streets, which is a nuisance, there's a safety issue that is involved in that. We have a capacity issue with the 18-some-odd, 1800-some-odd medallions, and the other issue that we have, and that is well-documented, is we want to make sure that the folks who drive these cabs are treated humanely, that they're treated well, that their money is not stolen, and that their rights are not trampled on or abused. So I think there's a huge holistic conversation, and I also appreciate the fact that no one's gotten this right in the country, right? There's no model that we actually look at, and I think Boston should be one of the folks at the table, really having a holistic conversation about this. Thank you very much. Please add my name, and again, compliments to the author, President Linehan, for putting this forward.
Thank you. Please assign docket 1246 to the Committee of City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. Madam Clerk, please read docket 1247.
Docket number 1247, Counsel Zachem offered the following order that pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 233, Section 8, the Boston City Council's Committee of the Whole summons Ian Wa Faisal to appear before the Committee on Housing on August 13, 2014, at 11:00 a.m. to discuss Alpha's business practices, its relationship with Northeastern, and the recent findings of the Office of Fair Housing and Equity.
Chair recognizes Counsel Zachem on docket 1247.
Thank you, Mr. President. I today offer this order for a summons to require, as the clerk read, Mr. Faisal to finally appear before the Housing Committee. This has been an ongoing saga over the past few months that began with the Boston Globe Spotlight Series investigation into housing conditions in many of our student neighborhoods and throughout the city of Boston. Alpha Management and Mr. Faisal and his colleagues were a focus of this investigation due to repeated and ongoing violations of building codes, health codes, numerous ISD violations, nearly 20 complaints at the Attorney General's office, which we reviewed during this process. Counselor Baker, as Chairman of the Housing Committee, has graciously led multiple hearings on this, and even worked with my office to offer Mr. Faisal the opportunity to pick his date to appear before the committee to answer some of these questions. The first hearing, on May 27, Mr. Faisal refused to appear, instead of sending several of his attorneys to speak on his behalf. They were unable to answer basic questions, so basic as how many units of housing in the city of Boston Mr. Faisal and Alpha Management owns and operates. The best estimates, between 3,000 and 5,000 units. Either way, it's a substantial portion of the rental housing units in the city of Boston. After that initial hearing, Mr. Faisal, in written communications with my office, with Housing Committee Chairman Baker, offered to appear at a later date that he set himself. We agreed, we held the hearing, and once again, Mr. Faisal refused to appear. Inspection Services Commissioner Christopher and others appeared and have been great partners on this. I think Counsel Baker's been a great partner on this, as Chairman of the committee hosting these multiple hearings, and I think it's far past time for Mr. Faisal to come and explain himself to the city council. Not only has it been the ongoing building code and health code violations, but we most recently heard that the, or were told, that the city of Boston, our Fair Housing Office, Office of Fair Housing and Equity, found probable cause that Alpha Management is now discriminating against potential tenants on the basis of national origin. In particular, that matter is now with the State Attorney General's office, but after an investigation of the city, Office of Fair Housing and Equity, assisted by Suffolk University Law students, who did tests to see if national origin was a factor, if race was a factor, and people being denied housing opportunities in Alpha Management properties, probable cause was found, and that matter is now being dealt with at the Attorney General's office. You know, this, again and again, is example of someone who has run a large company in the city of Boston, who's had negative impact on many of our neighborhoods, and who consistently refuses to appear and explain, and possibly, you know, hopefully tell us what he's doing to rectify these problems, and that's why we've asked for this order. It's quite clear in the general laws, and we've been in contact with central staff at the president's office, and the clerk's been a great help in figuring out, you know, the process for issuing this summons, but the state law is quite clear that the city council has this authority. I think this is a great opportunity and a great, very important opportunity to take a stand to protect folks throughout Boston, renters, potential renters, people who are being possibly discriminated against and living in substandard housing conditions. So I ask my colleagues, all of your support on this. I'm going to move for a suspension and passage, so that we can hopefully resolve this matter without further delay, to have this hearing on the date set forth in the order. So, thank you very much, Mr. President. Move for a suspension and passage.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to support our colleague, the
I rise to support our colleague, this individual is the subject of an inquiry, was identified as being part of the problem, was given the opportunity to come in to be part of the solution, submitted dates to the author and to the chair of the committee, and, and blew it off basically, and disrespected the cause in terms of the root of what this issue is. And it's, it's a huge issue in our city, dealing with housing, dealing with affordable housing, dealing with the issues that sort of surround this individual's properties. And so I'm in full support of this order, and, and once again, we'll renew through the chair and through the author, the request to have the rule suspended, have this matter passed, and, and let's get this individual in here for a hearing. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel McCarthy.
The writer, Counsel Zakeham, you know, in a, in a hockey term or sports term, we call this stick-tootiveness. And, you know, this guy really doesn't understand how important this is to you and to all of us. Student move-in day is just a little over a month away, September 1st. We'll have thousands of kids, not only from all over the country, but from all over the world. What's happening here with this management company is direct, really a direct, it shows a bad image for Boston, and it's a direct relationship to how we present ourselves as a city and how we present ourselves as neighborhoods. So not only is it important, as Counsel Zakeham said, not only for the people who are moving into Boston, but for the residents that surround, who live there 365 days a year, who dread September 1st, as we all know, and I know Counsel Siomo is deep into that as well. And this is a direct relationship with, with all of those kids moving in, and the image that we want to have as, as a student-friendly city. So I want to thank you and Counsel Baker as well, and, and I look forward to the hearing.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just rise to support our good colleague in, in this request for a summons, and at this time, I'd like to second his motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the second, Counsel Yancey. Counsel LaMaitina.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to support my colleague and friend. Landlords need to be responsible. I have in my district, where we have these absentee landlords, big buildings, renting out to students, and they need to be held accountable. So when we're having a hearing and they're causing the problems, they should respond to the city. So I am here to support and ask that my name be added. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel LaMaitina. Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to commend Counsel Zakeham and have my name added to this order. It's very important that as the legislative branch of city government, we not be ignored by any stakeholder in the city, and if that means bringing Anwar Faisal in here in irons, then we should do that, Mr. President. I support Counsel Zakeham, and I think we send a clear message when we vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Counsel O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Allow me to add my voice to the chorus in supporting and standing with my good colleague and friend, the District 8 City Counsel, Counsel Zakeham, and acknowledging his, as well as Counsel Wu and Counsel McCarthy, and returning Counsel Flaherty. I've been so impressed that the newer members of the body, the folks that joined us this year, this calendar year, have really tackled so many of the important, large issues in the neighborhood. Counsel Zakeham and I share a little bit of, of parts of Ward 10. I have the back of the hill and, and, you know, certainly this problem property landlord has, is a reach throughout all of Mission Hill in the city of Boston, so I thank him for his work and look forward to supporting him and standing with all of our neighbors and constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I got to sit in on the hearing, and I've never been so angered as a, as a counselor as someone sat in Counsel Murphy's seat and chose to tell us how to do our job and tell us what we should be thinking about as counselors. The lawyer who was sent was very, very disrespectful to this body, disrespectful to this council, and disrespectful to my friend, Counsel Zakeham. It is absolutely important that every landlord in the city of Boston who is out of line be held to account. I would say, and the only broadening of this, I would note, is that not only are students being taken advantage of in the city of Boston, there's some folks who aren't students, there's some people who just live here, who are being taken advantage of by many companies. Counsel Presley and I just recently sat in a room and heard about rents that were being raised from $1,600 to $3,200 upon acquisition. We heard about people being taken advantage of where raw sewage was running in their basement. So all of that said, Mr. President, I'd like to have my name added. I emphatically support Counsel Zakeham, and I look forward to attending that hearing.
Now, Madam Clerk, please add the names of Counsel Jackson, Counsel Murphy, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Presley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Yancey, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Siomo, and, and the chair. Counsel Siomo?
Yes.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to also support our good colleague. As, as was stated earlier, my neighborhood is especially impacted by student move-in weekend, and we're working with the administration, as we do every year, to make sure that it's as smooth as possible, but there must be tons and tons of trash on the streets of my neighborhood. And Mr. Faisal is a major landlord in my neighborhood, and the fact that he just won't come in and talk to us, we're, we're looking for solutions here. We need every tool available to us to ensure that, you know, we have the, the basic standards of cleanliness and sanitation that are offered to the residents of the city of Boston. So I, I rise to support my, my friend and colleague, Josh Zakeham, and ask that my name be added as well.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. So Counsel Zakeham moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1247. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1247 has passed. Counsel Zakeham doubts the vote. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Baker?
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo?
Yes.
Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson?
Yes.
Counsel Jackson, yes.
Counsel LaMaitina?
Yes.
Counsel LaMaitina, yes.
Yes.
Counsel Linehan?
Yes.
Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy, yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes.
Counsel O'Malley?
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes.
Counsel Presley?
Yes.
Counsel Presley, yes.
Counsel Wu?
Yes.
Counsel Yancey?
Yes.
Counsel Yancey, yes.
And Counsel Zakeham?
Counsel Zakeham? We have a unanimous vote, Mr. President.
The clerk has informed me that docket 1247 has passed unanimously. At this time, I'd like to recognize some guests that we have here today. They were here for a previous docket related to the Boston Police retirees having an opportunity to do details. BPPA President and Tommy Nie and Jim Barry, Detective of the Benevolent Society, Brian Black of Boston Police Federation, Jack Kerwin, and Captain Tim Murray. Thank you for being here today, gentlemen. And thank you for your service.
Docket number 1248, Counsel Linehan offered the following order for a hearing regarding the assessment and inventory of city-owned property and buildings.
Chair recognizes President Linehan.
Thank you, Vice President Siomo. Docket 1248 is an order for a hearing on the assessment and inventory of city-owned property and buildings. I believe that at this time, this is something that's long overdue. The, the assessing department does a comprehensive assessment of every single property in the city, but they don't do the same for our own public properties. Boston continues to undergo a remarkable period of transformation through development and redevelopment. This order starts to complicate the city's own property and public buildings. We need to know the value of all our assets if we're going to have a true assessment of where we stand financially. And, and then having a master list, having a value assessor them will give us clear indication, an indication to the mayor and the administration of the value and how we may leverage those values, like we do with the annual budget or with bond matters on capital improvements. So there, there may be properties that are surplus. There may be properties, due to their value, that should be sold to use as an opportunity to build other properties. We could divest and reinvest. We could do a number of things, but we need the city of Boston, we need the assessing department to go out and come to a true value of all our property, including City Hall. I mean, the value of this building and the worth of using it every day in the manner we, in the manner in which we do, is subject to much debate. And so if you think about this alone, and then add the buildings on 1010 Mass Ave, or the buildings on Southampton Street, or the different school buildings, or the fire headquarters, in, in all, all in all, it is of the utmost importance for us to do this. So I'm asking for my colleagues to, to support this matter, to have a vital hearing and, and a process. And I would say that if assessing feels that they, you know, inundated with work in, in other matters, then we should pay to have a consultant do it under their auspices. We need to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please add the name of Counsel Murphy and Counsel Zakeham, and my name, please. And docket 1248 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means. Oh, I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Counsel Yancey. I apologize.
Thank you very much. I've been up there before. I know on occasion you can ignore, I may fail to see a light. I just wanted to, again, thank our good colleague and our president for offering this hearing order. I'd like to sign my name on, to it, and just cite a very difficult moment I had a few years ago, when I learned that we were selling a piece of property for significantly less than what the assessor evaluated that property on Commercial Street in the, in the North End, I believe. So I think this will be very helpful when we face situations like that in the future, at least get answers to why we're selling a property for less than what our own assessing department has valued it at. So this is very timely. I'd like to add my name to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please add the name of Counsel Wu, Counsel Presley, and Counsel Jackson, and docket 1248 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means. Madam, Madam Clerk, please read docket 1249.
Docket 1249, Counsel Yancey offered the following, an order requesting certain information under Section 17F, F, listing of all boards, commissions, and authorities for the city of Boston by name, date established, enabling legislation, name, title, race, gender, address, and term.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. Chair recognizes Counsel Yancey on docket 1249.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I believe each of us should know which boards, commissions, and authority operate in the city of Boston, whether we have any vacancies there, whether they're reflective of the neighborhoods and the communities of Boston. So I'm asking for that information in terms of the actual name of the boards, commission, and authorities, and another list providing the membership. So I ask for a suspension and passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Yancey. So Counsel Yancey moves suspension of the rules and passage of, of docket 1249. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1249 has passed.
Docket number 1250, Counsel Linehan and Murphy offered the following order to establish a commission to recognize former mayor of, of Boston Raymond L. Flynn.
Chair recognizes President Linehan.
Siomo, and sorry for having you get up and down as many times. Ron, thank you for the name changes. This is a, I went, on Sunday, I went to Mayor Flynn's 75th birthday party. And on Friday, previous to that, Counsel Murphy and I submitted this order to form a commission to appropriately recognize someone who has committed much of his life to public service. So of course, we did the, you know, the proclamation, and we read some, some jokes and light matters, but when we actually brought the, the notion that today we formally submit to form a commission, I can honestly say that the former mayor was extremely moved. And as a past member of this body, and someone who's contributed as a state rep, as a city counselor, as a mayor, and as an ambassador to the Holy See, which is a nation of a billion people, he deserves this recognition, and it's long overdue. And I know that many of my colleagues here have worked with the former mayor, and, and many of us got our careers started in the very rubber-meets-the-road business of city government. And so I'm honored with Counsel Murphy to, to bring this forward to all of you today. We're going to ask for suspension and passage so that this commission could get, get underway immediately, and I'll also look for any input and any contribution that any of you may add, or any of your constituents might want to add to this particular effort. And I also, because we have a rule and you only have two people on an order, Counsel Flaherty will, I think, ask that we suspend the rule, and I'll let him do that at the end of this. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Murphy.
Mr. Vice President, and may I say, not to be one who starts any trouble around here, you look very natural up there. I don't want to be one who starts anything. But let me say this, it was an honor for Bill Linehan as the counselor for District 2 to invite me to sign on to this. I've known Mayor Flynn and his family, as we all have, I think, for many, many years, and his contributions to the city as a city counselor at large for many years, and as a mayor, where he actually brought the recognition, or brought the attention back to the neighborhoods of Boston from where it had developed into a downtown kind of a city under his predecessor. And he did a lot of healing, because his predecessor had some tough times, and Mayor Flynn was about healing the city over his 10 years. And he's a good man, and he continues to be a good human being, and the way the city has done this since I've been here, we, the city council spurred the start of the Collins Plaza, which out front the City Hall Plaza, technically is named for John Collins, and that started on February 2nd of 97, here in this chamber. That's why you see the frieze of Mayor Collins out there, and it says, Mayor Collins, Mayor, 40th Mayor of the city, but it doesn't appropriately acknowledge the fact that the city council order says that City Hall Plaza shall be, and since 2002, forever known as John F. Collins Plaza. Kevin White's statue, we were looking for a place, obviously, Mayor Menino and the council to put something forward, and they came up with Faneuil Hall since Kevin White refurbished Faneuil Hall during his tenure. And the Collins statue took 30 years, the Collins frieze, 30 years from when Collins left as mayor. Kevin White, it took 23 years, and now Flynn has been out for 21 years, and Bill Linehan is offering a new way through the city council and the council presidency's office to form a commission, and I support it 100%. It's overdue, as, as the maker said, and I look forward to working to appropriately honor former Mayor Raymond Flynn for his contributions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This time, move for a suspension of the rule and passage of the order.
I'm sorry. Counsel Yancey, I'm not going to do it twice.
Thank you very much. I believe I'm the only one in the chamber who actually served on the city council during Mayor Flynn's entire tenure, and it was a very... And it was a very exciting decade, Mr. Chair, for many different reasons. It was my first time sitting in that chair back in 1984. And I actually have the office that was formerly occupied by Mayor Flynn. But on a more important level, I have to publicly acknowledge and thank Mayor Flynn for joining me on the South African divestment legislation. And he picked up the ball and ran with it after we got it passed here and urged other cities and towns, not only in the United States, but throughout the world. He actually traveled to the Hague in Amsterdam to urge all the cities around the world to divest from businesses supporting the apartheid regime in South Africa. He also was very instrumental in joining me in the establishment of the Galavan Community Center and the Maripan-Darchester Police Station. Those projects were not foregone conclusions. We worked together. We struggled together. We even fought together to get those facilities for residents of Boston. And I thank him for it. So I think it's altogether appropriate that this commission be formed and that we appropriately recognize the hard work of Mayor Flynn and his family that also sacrificed greatly for the City of Boston. So I'd like to have my name added. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counselor Lamatina.
Mr. Vice President, I rise to commend the two makers and ask that my name be added. Mayor Flynn, Ambassador Flynn, gave my first job in 1987 as Neighbor Service Coordinator for East Boston and the North End. And then when the Central Ory project started, he gave me another job working on the Central Ory project as Assistant Director on the Transportation Team of the Central Ory Project. And I got a lot of good lessons. I mean, you learn from a lot of people. But with Ray Flynn, something that always stuck to me was, he always said, if someone calls City Hall, it's probably the most important phone call that they have ever made, to call City Hall. And you have to do whatever you can to help that person. And I live like that today. I try to live like that today. And if someone calls my office, to be very, very responsive. So I want to commend my two colleagues. And I think this is overdue, long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like your add name?
Please.
And please add my name, Madam Clerk. Chair recognizes Counselor Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I also would like to rise to commend the makers, add my name. I was at the party on Sunday also. Ray Flynn also gave me my first job. It was custodian, also nothing that big. But I've come a little way, I've come a little way from there. Ray's a good man, and it's long overdue, like I said, and I'm proud to add my name. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Please add the name of Counselor Jackson, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Presley, Counselor Wu, and Counselor Zachem. Counselor Flaherty now moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1250. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
The motion is passed. Out the vote.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo.
Yes.
Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, yes. Counselor Yancey. Counselor Yancey, yes. And Counselor Zachem. Counselor Zachem. We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please read docket 1251.
Docket number 1251, Counselor Linehan offered the following ordinance, amending CBC 2-8.3, City Council Personnel Salaries.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counselor President Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. 1251 is a continuation of our central staff reorganization that began with 0864. This is an ordinance change, one that needs to be done. The Rules Committee has also to the Rules Committee, we had much productive work and a great input and hope to have an expediated hearing and maybe bring this matter to fruition in our next city council meeting in August. Thank you.
Thank you. Please assign docket 1251 to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 1252, Counselor Murphy and Flaherty offer the following order for a hearing regarding Harvard University pilot.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. President, I know pilot is a topic that I've beaten to death over the last eight or 10 years. I want to thank Counselor Flaherty for joining me. You know, to go through the history a little bit, we've had this issue where all of these private nonprofit big employers in the city, and eds and meds I'm talking about, but in this case, educational institutions, participated in a task force that I was the vice chair of under the former mayor, Tom Menino, and agreed with each other and with the members of the task force that we would have a new formula for making an even hand, sweeping with an even hand the payments in lieu of taxes that these big employers are supposed to pay. And for me, I just want to, we started in FY11, and in FY12, everybody toed the line. And FY13's numbers, I looked at them over the course of the last few weeks. And many of these folks are falling off of their obligations. And I targeted Harvard in this, but there are a lot of other institutional, educational institutions that aren't meeting their obligations that they agreed to meet. For example, Harvard University, before we had the task force, paid $2.1 million for all their land and buildings. Under their formula in FY13, they were supposed to pay $7.2 million. And they had asked, each university had asked for a community benefits credit so that they could do not only cash but also services to the people of Boston. So we had agreed to give them half of their pilot could be done in community benefits, the other half in cash. So if you were to take the $7.2 million less their community benefits credit, in fiscal year 13, Harvard should have paid $3.6 million to the city. Harvard paid $2.1 million. And they're not alone. This order, and I've got a companion order that I late filed for the other institutions. But this only shows that Harvard is stiffing the taxpayers of Boston to the tune of $1.4 million when it comes to pilot payments. We know that they bought a great deal of land in Alston under a real estate agency, a straw buyer back in the early 2000s. We never realized that it was Harvard until it was too late. My good colleague from District 9 kind of inherited the mess when he took over in 2006. And he can probably tell us that there are other obligations being made by Harvard because I know he sits on a task force with the two state reps over there, and he's done a good job holding their feet to the fire. But I focus strictly on pilots, payment in lieu of taxes. And when they're not meeting that obligation, they're missing it by over $800,000, I think they should be held accountable. You know, one of the reasons we have pilots is because all of these institutions are tax exempt because they're educational in nature. But they don't just educate kids. They have other properties. They have commercial properties. They have other residential properties, which you could argue are for residence, for student residences, but they might be for more. Harvard University happens to own, own the land that the Doubletree Hotel sits on by Stero Drive. So Harvard is a hotel owner. And the hotel doesn't pay their workers anywhere near a fair wage. So when the workers go to the hotel management and say, gee, well, it isn't us. It's Harvard. And Harvard says, it isn't us. It's the hotel. So, you know, they're pointing at one another. And that's at the gist of why I filed this with Counselor Flaherty. But it opens up a much bigger story. I can just tell you that Northeastern University underpays to the tune of $800,000 every year. Berkeley College underpays to the tune of $90,000. Boston College underpays to the tune of $300,000. And that's why the late file comes in. I'm not going to speak on the late file, but you can see why I filed that if it can be a companion piece that we can have a hearing together and bring them all in at once. We'll get to the bottom. The city, in my view, is losing because of nonenforcement of the pilot thing. They're losing an addition of $3 to $4 million a year in cash plus obligations that are made in community benefits. And I just think that we can't go away on this. Just because we did the formula and they all agreed to buy it, we've got to stay there, stay with it, and get them to keep their word to the taxpayers of Boston and to the city councillors. And I thank Counselor Flaherty for his indulgence. I offer to all my colleagues to sign on and apologize that we've been kind of out for three weeks and I really haven't seen a lot of people as I was formulating this order. I know a lot of people probably would have wanted their name on that. So, mea culpa. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Murphy. It seems like the council's been quite busy since we've been off for a couple of weeks. Counselor Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Of course, I'd like to commend our good colleague at large, Counselor Murphy, for offering this. This is one of the many revenue sources that the Post Audit and Oversight Committee has been reviewing for fiscal year 13 and 14. And he's right. The only thing I would add is that perhaps added to this formula is a requirement that no institution pay the city less than they pay their chief executive officer. Now, many of us know that there are several presidents of various universities earning more than $1 million a year. Yet some of those are paying nothing close to that amount. But I look forward to the hearing and ask that my name be added and I'll support it any way that I can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Please add Counselor Yancey's name, add Counselor Baker's name, add Counselor Lamatina's name, Counselor McCarthy's, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Presley. Yes. And please add my name, Counselor Zachem.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend Counselor Murphy and Flaherty for putting this order together as somebody who represents the Mission Hill neighborhood where sometimes feels they're under invasion by Northeastern University. I'm gratified that Counselor Murphy pointed out that Northeastern is one of the most egregious underpayers to the pilot program. It's something that I know my predecessor, former Counselor Ross, worked on for many years. It's something I continue to work on. And I think it's, if just spending, and I'm sure Counselor Siomo could probably speak to this in his neighborhood, but just spending some time in the evening and the weekends in the neighborhood, we see what an impact on quality of life some of our colleges and universities have despite the economic benefits, despite the fact that, you know, being a research center, being a job growth center is incredibly important to the city. You have to give something back to the City of Boston, whether it's pilot payments to help support our emergency services, our infrastructure, things that everyone uses. We need to renew this focus. I certainly applaud Counselor Murphy's past work on this. I look forward to the hearing and working with him on this important issue for all the colleges and universities and nonprofit institutions in the city, but a special focus on those in the Mission Hill neighborhood and Northeastern University. Thank you, Mr. President. And please add my name.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Please add Counselor Zachem's name. Counselor Siomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend the authors as well. I came into office in 2008. I know it probably seems like I've been here longer. But since 2008, the university, Harvard in particular, has come to the table more. But I want to commend the work of the task force in particular. When I first came into office, pilot payments to the City of Boston for the entire budget, When I first came into office, pilot payments to the city of Boston for the entire budget, the entire revenue was $30 million. It's increased by 50% in just over the past five years because of the work of the task force and the members of this council. They should be paying that fair share. They're the richest university in the world. They're richer than, they're the eighth richest country in the world. So I join and ask that my name be added and look forward to the hearing to ensure that all of the colleges, universities, and nonprofits pay their share towards the services that they use in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Siomo. Add Councilor Siomo's name. Councilor Jackson.
Mr. President, please add my name. Couple of months ago, I put forth some, a hearing order to look at the community benefits component, and I think it's, it's appropriate to look at pilot payments for every single school. I think the other thing, and the hearing that I put forward also looks at is actually how many Boston public school students that these colleges and universities are actually taking, how many scholarships that they're providing to Boston public school students, what does their faculty and staff actually look like relative to the folks who live in the city of Boston? And also, is that faculty and staff a reflection of the people who live in the city of Boston? All of these are really important questions to ask. We are a city that prides ourselves around education, and these are amenities, yes, but these amenities actually can do some things to help. One of the things I would put forward is Northeastern University recently signed a community benefits agreement that actually looked at procurement and where they're spending their dollars and how they can spend money, the Boston-based businesses. And so the dollars that they're already spending actually come back to the city of Boston. All of these anchor institutions and in places like Cleveland, we've actually seen anchor institutions really move things forward. And so it's absolutely critical with these large anchor institutions, if you're not going to pay it, as Councilor Murphy's noting, folks aren't even paying their bill, the least that they can do is actually do business with Boston-based businesses, with businesses of people who look like the folks in the city of Boston, and opening opportunities for women in the city of Boston. So please add my name, and I compliment Councilor Murphy's really hard work on this particular issue to increase revenue in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Add his name, please. And Councilor Presley, you have the floor.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I'll be speaking a little bit more on the subject of accountability on the next docket, but I just wanted to commend Councilor Murphy. If there's such a thing as a dog with a bone, he has been that with this. And for that, I'm very grateful. I thank him for his stewardship in this space. But I just want to say for those of us who are constantly dealing with folks who would question the relevance of this body, you know, the actions that are taking place in this chamber today are evidence of the relevance of this body. You know, whether we're talking about irresponsible landlords or shortly developers who make contracts with the city and don't follow through, or formulas that have been set in place when we're talking about our colleges and universities. And I, I want to be very clear in saying this, no one on this body is discrediting the asset added by these colleges and universities. We are grateful for what they provide. They helped to make this a world-class city. They, you know, move people to want to set up roots here and to make a life here. So we're grateful for what they do in terms of the employment that they provide and the world-class education that they provide and all that they do to support our brand as a world-class city. But, you know, people often talk about government abusing power. Today is an example of our leveraging our power to hold people accountable. Again, whether it be Anwar Faisal as an irresponsible landlord, or surely I'll be talking about developers who make contracts and don't honor them, or whether it be our colleges and universities when it comes to pilot. If you make a deal, you need to honor it. And it's our job and our responsibility as a body to hold people accountable to those agreements. So again, Councilor Murphy, I commend you for your leadership, and I believe my name has already been added, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Presley. All right. Docket 1252 is assigned to the Committee on Post Audit and Oversight. Madam Clerk, I'd like to recognize somebody that's in the audience at this time, someone who has contributed in his own right to the city over many years. He's, we did, we addressed the matter earlier and placed it in the Committee on Economic Development, the good Dr. Ted Landsmark, who's here with us today. Ray Flynn give you your first yug too, Ted? And McCarthy? Madam Clerk, please read 1253.
Docket number 1253, Councilor Presley offered the following audit for hearing to identify mechanisms to ensure transparency, accountability, and investment in affordable housing and jobs funds through the BRA development agreement.
The chair recognizes Councilor Presley on docket 1253.
Thank you, Mr. President. As elected officials, we attend a lot of meetings. It is at these meetings by engaging and actively listening to those whom we are honored to represent. We're educated about existing challenges and issues, disparities. It is also in these spaces, again, by actively listening, we hear solutions to these challenges. This initiative, this hearing order that I'm filing today is one of the solutions born out of our Boston Residents' Jobs Policy Working Group that I co-chaired for the last two years, a diverse coalition of stakeholders and advocates that have been, you know, again, meeting over the course of the last two years. So in response to feedback from residents and community organizations throughout our city, I'm putting this forward as every neighborhood in our city should share in the financial benefits of development. This is a neighborhood transcendent issue. The recently conducted audit of the BRA, which I would like to thank the mayor for having the courage to conduct, only affirmed the concerns that residents and neighborhood groups from around the city have expressed, gross inadequacies in basic business procedures, transparency, and accountability at the BRA. As a resident of this great city, I am particularly angered by the lack of data collection and compliance monitoring around Boston's linkage program, inclusionary development policy, and Boston's neighborhood jobs fund payments. My particular focus with this hearing order, and something that I mentioned throughout the budget hearing process, is to push for a minimum standard community benefits agreement with clear accountability mechanisms ensuring these benefits, as well as commitments to linkage funds, Affordable Housing Trust, and jobs fund payments, that they are tracked and honored in a timely manner. Now, I recognize that each neighborhood should be developed with a customized and specialized approach, but surely there are some baseline standards for which we can all agree are fundamental to a thriving neighborhood. Now, I've sat at many tables with developers and residents negotiating CBAs, and this has been a growing scenario in light of the boon in development which we are experiencing. Over and over again, I've heard there's not a strong and clear process of drafting and collecting on community benefits agreements. I believe this would also provide, if we were to establish a standard baseline agreement, this would provide developers with clear instructions and a level of predictability that they would enthusiastically receive. I want to commend Mayor Walsh and his administration for their efforts to bring the BRA into the 21st century. I thank him for his strong commitment to development in this city, but also to affordable housing and job creation. And I look forward to partnering with him, with residents, developers, and this body to ensure that economic development and planning in Boston occurs in a transparent process and continues to serve the best interests of the residents of this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Presley. Councilor Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilor Presley, I want to compliment you on, on your work. I want to not speak to the issues of the developers. I want to speak to the issues of the city. Excel was actually developed right, right across the street, not too far from here in, at Lotus. It is absolutely unacceptable that the BRA was keeping all of this information on paper. Millions of dollars that should have been collected was kept on paper. And I, you know, I have a, a suggestion. We have this, these awesome new things called computers where this information should be stored at our fingertips. We have, as a council, had to deal with tough budgets. We've had to make really difficult calls as a city council. We all have had to look people in, in their face and say, we can't afford it this year. Well, the sad part is maybe we could have afforded it. Maybe we could have had more youth summer jobs. Maybe we could have had more capital projects. Maybe we could have kept some of the schools open that were closed. We actually, based on the lack of information, the way in which documents were not kept, we don't actually even know the answer. Which as a, as a, as a, as a council, we have to have all of the latest information relative to the finances of the city of Boston. We just heard Councilor Linnahan, President Linnahan, speak to, we want to know how much land that we own, and we want to know how much is worth. These are deals that were cut, and honestly, I blame, I don't blame the developers. None of us have to wait for our excise tax bill to come. It comes. None of us have to wait for our property tax bill. It comes all the time. We should have been holding developers accountable. We should have made sure the dollars were brought in before any of these developers were able to move on to any other project. That is on us as a city, and I applaud Mayor Walsh for coming in and from doing, for doing a top-down look at what we need to do at the BRA. I hope to hear more. I also know that the city of Boston has not participated in planning since 1955. We have to also, in addition to looking at the dollars, actually not only do the development part, but we have to do our homework and actually do some planning in the city of Boston. We all earn a ZBA every single week. Everything in the city of Boston is an exception. So in all honesty, Mr. President, there's no rule. We have to bring all of these things together and actually look at this. And we need to find out how much is actually owed. And then also, and I'll just, I will close, we also know that the Boston, the Boston Residents' Job Policy at the BRA is actually tracked by the BRA. And they have done a very poor job at the tracking and in particular, the enforcement of, of that policy. And a little bit later, the, you know, the person who actually put forward that policy will be acknowledged. They got to get it, they have to get things into line. I appreciate your leadership on this, Councilor Presley, and I look forward to standing there with you to make sure that we get, we get into line. There are probably millions of dollars that we've foregone, and the interest on that money is not monetary interest. The interest on that money is the opportunity cost that young people in our city, not-so-young people in our city, and residents of the city of Boston have had to forego because those dollars weren't pulled in. Thank you so much, Mr. President. Please add my name.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. And add Councilor Jackson's name. Could you please add my name, Madam Clerk? Councilor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend the maker, my dear friend, the at-large counsel from Dorchester, Councilor Presley, ask that my name be added, and also want to echo my appreciation for Mayor Walsh's really laser-like focus on this. This is something he talked about as a candidate, and he has absolutely been delivering as mayor with a real honest, robust audit by KPMG. When I read the, the article in The Globe about this several weeks ago, one of the things that struck me the most was the fact that we've got potentially millions upon millions of dollars that have been earmarked for affordable housing left on the table and uncollected. And we all have a unique perspective on this, because how many times has there been a project, a proposed project in our districts that's been controversial, and we've worked with neighbors, we've worked with developers, we've worked with all stakeholders to try to find something that made sense? And oftentimes, and I'm thinking of a large development on South Huntington Avenue in Jamaica Plain, where we worked, it was a controversial issue, it was a, a lot of people were engaged, but we worked. And one of the things that ultimately got support, both public and private buy-in, was the fact that it was going to have a significant number of affordable housing units, as well as other ways to, to prevent people from being priced out of the neighborhood, certain people. And the fact that we all work hard on that, we spend political capital, we bring people together, and I, it's not just us, it's, it's the mayor's office, it's, it's our colleagues in the legislature and the city delegation, it's other people that want to make it work. And it seems that if, in some cases, according to this audit, all of that work was for naught, and I find that absolutely infuriating. So I look forward to a robust hearing. Another aspect, I spoke with the lead author on this after she, when she told me she was introducing it, and I think there's an opportunity, and I hope that we include members of the BRA board as stakeholders in this. That is probably our biggest leverage we have. We have to aboard, we have to approve the BRA board members. And I was delighted when I read this week that Mayor Walsh is going to nominate my constituent, my friend, Dr. Ted Landsmark, someone whose reputation is stellar and without blemish, to be a member. That's a great step. That's a great first step. But we need to be able to work with the board members to see if we can help them in any capacity with oversight, with transparency, to make sure that we're able to not leave money on the table and really conduct ourselves as a city in a robust, robustly transparent manner. So thank you, Mr. President. Look forward to the hearing.
Thank you, Councilor O'Malley. Please add Councilor O'Malley's name, add Councilor Siomo's name, add Councilor Lamatina, Councilor McCarthy, Councilor Wu, and Councilor Zaken's name. Councilor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to have my name added as well, and I want to commend Councilor Presley for her focus on this. And just simply say that back in 2007, I had the honor of being appointed by President Feeney the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, Mr. President. I think you might have had a role in that, you and Councilor Lamatina. And thank you so much for that. But I remember the first time I talked to John Palmieri, who was the BRA Director, and I said, I'd like you to come down to a budget hearing of the city council. And that had never been asked of them before because they get their budget externally. And I said, no, we want you to come down, even though we don't provide the money, it isn't, you're not in the city budget, you've got your own. He said, well, we're not coming down. We don't feel the need to respond, you know? And they're created by state law, the BRA, and state law always trump city ordinance. And then I found what Josh Zaken used today, Chapter 233 of the Mass General Laws, and I called him up, and I said, whether you like it or not, I'm not going away. And I read, go read the law. And they came down for their hearing. The only time they come down is when there, there's a gun pointed at them by this body. We've all known that. And we have a new mayor, a breath of fresh air for the city. And he's come in, and he's looking at the BRA now, and he's pledged support to the council and to work with the council, yourself and all of us included. And I just wonder maybe if we shouldn't put something in this order that requests that they come quarterly and give a report on all of their findings so that they're on the record in this chamber in our house, and we're not searching for their records upstairs. I just think, you know, the time is now. I'm just adding my, my idea to Councilor Presley's order for the hearing. So I, I think when, you know, maybe we can make something, make them a little bit more accountable, that's one way. Thank you.
Please add Councilor Murphy's name. Thank you, Councilor Murphy. Councilor Yancey.
Thank you very much. Very briefly, Mr. President, I too like to commend the maker of this order and like to have my name added. And I actually have a copy of the last plan made for the city of Boston. It's actually dated 1965, under the aegis of Mayor Collins. I think it is important for the city council to weigh in, not only on the question of how resources are allocated or misallocated, but also on the purpose of the BRA itself. We've had this extensive discussion last year during the campaign for mayor as to whether we even need to have a BRA, or maybe it should be broken up to a planning, a real planning agency versus a development by opportunity agency that tends to jump through hoops to accommodate certain developers if they come in with the right price. I recall we had extensive discussion about a parcel on Washington Street, and the BRA came in and asked us to declare it a blighted area. All of you know where the Millennium Tower now stands. That was declared blighted by this body in, in response to the 1965 plan. Now, across the street from that site, there's a gleaming, shiny new building that was valued at in excess of $600 million. But yet, the side across the street was declared blighted by some of these antiquated policies of the BRA. So I look forward to the hearing, Mr. President, and I commend the maker of the order. I'd like to have my name added.
Thank you, Councilor Yancey. Docket 1253 is assigned, is assigned to the Committee on Housing and the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor. Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1254, Councilor Presley and Jackson offered the following resolution in support of naming the new municipal building in Dudley Square, formerly known as the Ferdinand Building, the Bruce C. Bowling Municipal Building.
Chair recognizes Councilor Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to move to suspend Rule 12 of the council rules to add Councilor Yancey's name as a cosponsor of the resolution.
Hearing no objection. Councilor Yancey's name is soet.
And I would like to, for the first speaker on this order, or this resolution, rather, Mr. President, I would like to defer to Councilor Jackson, a native son of Roxbury, and sitting District Seven City Councilor.
And will you close, Councilor Presley? Councilor Jackson?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise as, one of my proudest moments as the District Seven Boston City Councilor, to move forward along with my colleague in government and my friend, Councilor Presley, to name the current building that we refer to as the Dudley Municipal Building. For old other folks, they call it the Ferdinand Building. But to put forward the name of Bruce C. Bowling, a counselor, Bruce C. Bowling, President Bruce C. Bowling, and native son of Roxbury, Bruce C. Bowling. In moving into this job and doing a little bit of research, I found that there was, the first person to sit in this seat was a giant in, in terms of government, someone who put forward the Boston Residents' Job Policy, someone who my dad, Herb Jackson, always spoke highly of and stood with and stood by. I am lucky that I actually live on Skyler Street, not too far from where the Bowlings also lived. This is a, a family in Royal Bowling and all of the Bowlings who have committed their lives to bettering the city of Boston, to closing disparities in the city of Boston, and to simply doing the right thing. Many of the folks here knew him, loved him, and also got to serve with him. I think it's just fitting that we do write by, as I refer to him as Mr. Bowling, but Bruce Bowling, to name this building after him. I would also note, it's also really important on that we also deal with the, the manner in which he passed away. I think it is absolutely critical on that we all commit ourselves to dealing with issues of healthcare disparities, and in particular for...